The May twentieth, twenty, uh, May twentieth, two thousand and twenty five work session and special session is now called to order. First up on the agenda, we have some proclamations to do today. Actually, there's five of them today, so can we have the National Kids to Parks Day first? Whoever's going to accept that? All right, for, uh, May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty five is the fifteenth Annual National Kids to Parks Day, organized and launched by the National Park Trust. A National Kids Day to Park Day empowers kids and encourages family to get outdoors and visit America's parks. And it is important that we encourage children to lead more active lifestyle to combat issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, and hypertension. And in recognition of National Kids to Parks Day, the city of Hagerstown would like to encourage children and adults in Hagerstown to explore their neighborhood parks and discover science, history, nature, and adventure. Now therefore, the mayor and city council of Hagerstown do hereby proclaim May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty five as National Kids to Parks Day and urge all citizens of Hagerstown to make time to take the children in their lives to a neighborhood state or national park.
Thank you, so we'd love to invite everyone out to our parks this season. We have twenty-two parks in the city of Hagerstown. We officially are open for the season. Potterfield Pool opens this weekend. I hope it's going to be a little bit warmer. But we have lots of activities, programs, events, things happening all season long. So please visit our hagerstownmd.org website or pick one of these flyers up to learn all about what's happening in our parks.
All right, next up, we have Lupus Awareness Month. Who is here to accept that? There, there she is, I couldn't find her anywhere. Lupus is an unpredictable and misunderstood autoimmune disease that ravages different parts of the body. It is difficult to diagnose, hard to live with, and a challenge to treat. And lupus can be particularly difficult to diagnose because its symptoms are similar to those of many other illnesses. Early signs and symptoms can include extreme fatigue, joint pain, headaches, a butterfly rash on the nose and cheeks, or hair loss. And anyone can develop lupus, however, women ages fifteen to forty-four, individuals with a family member with lupus or another autoimmune disease, and certain racial or ethnic groups are at higher risk. And early diagnosis and proper treatments are critical to the improvement of the quality of life and survival rate of the people with lupus. And increased public awareness, education, and research are key to winning the battle against lupus. Therefore, with the support of the city council, Iowa McIntyre, mayor of the city of Hagerstown, do hereby proclaim May twenty twenty five to be Lupus Awareness Month and encourage citizens to observe this month by educating themselves on the symptoms and impact of lupus.
I just want to say thank you for acknowledging lupus awareness for May twentieth, because I've been dealing with this since like two thousand and five. I believe I actually had it since nineteen ninety-three, but it's been so hard to diagnose. So I appreciate you all recognizing Lupus Awareness Month. Thank you so much.
Next up is Mental Health Awareness Month. Nobody's listed for that? We recognize that mental health is just as important as physical health, and acceptance of those who struggle reduces fear, worry, blame, and shame families and their loved ones experience. And the area that someone lives and plays a significant role in their overall health and well-being and surroundings can impact how and when a person's needs are met, which in turn affects mental health. And having safe, stable, and healthy home conditions set the foundation for achieving and maintaining good mental health. And with early and effective interventions, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. And each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen share the burden of mental health and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. Therefore, I, William McIntyre, on behalf of the city council hereby proclaim May two thousand and twenty five as Mental Health Month. We also call upon citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to increase awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health and the need for appropriate and accessible service for all people with mental health conditions. Next up is National Cancer Research Month. National Cancer Research Month aims to raise awareness about the importance of cancer research and to highlight the impact of scientific advancements in the fight against cancer. And the American Association for Cancer Research initiated and supports cancer, National Cancer Research Month, to highlight the importance of lifesaving research to the millions of people around the world affected by the collection of devastating diseases we call cancer. The month focuses on the critical role of research in transforming cancer care and finding new treatments and aims to educate the public about cancer research, including the latest advancements in ongoing clinical trials. And thanks to spectacular advances made by cancer research, more than eighteen million people in the United States and millions more worldwide are living with, through, and beyond their disease. Therefore, I, William McIntyre, on behalf of city council, do hereby proclaim and recognize May two thousand and twenty five as National Cancer Research Month and remind ourselves that cancer affects everyone. We encourage individuals to support cancer research through advocacy and participation in research efforts. Next up is Haitian Heritage Month.
Okay, as someone whose mother was born and raised in border friends, I E T, the moment carries a tremendous meaning for me and my family. It honors her journey, our roots, and the many Haitians who have contributed often quietly and humbly to fabric this country of this community. I want to extend my sincere thanks to the city's leadership and community members for making this a historic recognition possible. Today is more than just a proclamation. It is a powerful acknowledgement of our people, our culture, and the legacy that has shaped not only the Caribbean but the world. Haiti holds a unique and proud place in the world history. In eighteen oh four, Haiti became the first independent black republic and the first nation in the world to successfully overthrow slavery through revolution. Haiti's independence was not only a triumph, but for its own people, it was a beacon of hope and inspiration for the oppressed people across the globe. Sorry, I'm shaking. Okay, she's not here with me today, but okay, I got you, mom, I got you. The legacy still resonates today. Haiti's story is one of defiance in the face of injustice, of the culture and creativity born through struggle and unwavering strength. Thank you, Hagerstown, for recognizing the rich heritage and celebrating the first ever, 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 ever Heritage Month proclamation here in the city of Hagerstown. In doing so, you're not only helping preserve a vital piece of the world, but you're also affirming that all cultures deserve to be seen and heard. And for that, today, we are proclaiming Haitian Heritage Month for May two thousand and twenty five. Merci, merci en pile. You guys can talk about where you're from, any businesses that you guys have in Hagerstown.
I have from two thousand and eight-six, but now two thousand and twenty, twenty-five made me nineteen years. We are working in Hagerstown. I'm blessed about this city. I'm say, everyone, thank you for invite our Haitian coming to here, and God bless everyone.
Hi, everyone, my name is Camille. This is my dad right here, Mr. Luigi Alexis. And he, well, we have a Haitian store called Quality Caribbean Products. We've been open since last May and, um, May eighteenth last year. Yeah, May eighteenth last year, so about a year now. Located on Eight oh one South Potomac Street. And we also, well, as the Haitian community is growing like vastly in Hagerstown, there is multiple churches. We participate in a Haitian church called Igles Baptist, um, Ici de Calve, located on Fifteen High Street.
All right, I don't want to take too much time because I know sometimes these things are kind of like optional or viewed as that way. But I'm very proud to stand here today with my Haitian people because we have been in Hagerstown for quite some time. And Haitian people are hardworking, right? She mentioned May eighteenth, that's Haitian Flag Day. We have over three, within this mile radius, there are at least three Haitian churches. We got Tiboutique, that's ran by Tanya Anderson. She also runs the Washington County Black Professionals Network. We have Paul here, he has a business in the mall, the Haitian Dominican food. At least two people standing here are trilingual. They speak Spanish, Creole, English. Most of us speak French. Haiti is such a rich place. And the reason why I wanted to speak today is because a lot of times we see media coverage and we allow media coverage to define who people are. And I don't want you all to see Haitian people as a gang-ridden country or people who are uneducated. We're intelligent, we're family-oriented, we're resilient. We come from all over this country. Some of us are from Florida, some of us are from Brooklyn, but we came here. And these people have known me since I was less than a teenager. And to be here today with them to represent my young lady right here, she's probably been a translator all her life, amen? So I just want to, you know, get you guys to understand that Haitian people are, we're a tight-knit community. So you may not see us, but we're here. And what this proclamation means, it's an invitation for Haitian people to participate and to know that we're welcomed in this space. So I want to extend also an invitation for you all to come and support our businesses, support our churches, and just figure out who is in your backyard. Because history says that Haiti has impacted America in a very significant way. And Google is free, you can figure that out on your own. But also, America has impacted Haiti as well. So a lot of the violence and things that you see now are a direct result of that. So it's important that we do our research and understand the people that are in your community. So thank you guys for this proclamation.
My name is Paul Simpson, and I'm the owner of Mister Organic Cafe. I'm excited, happy to be with the Hagerstown community, Washington community, Washington County community. And I say thank you for today and May twenty, twenty, twenty-five. And we're going to acknowledge Haitian Heritage Month. So I think next year, we're going to celebrate in May eighteen, we're going to celebrate the Haitian Flag Day. And I'm here, I'm here too to invite everyone, I think, and January twenty, twenty twenty-six, January first, I will invite everybody to try the soup jumoo because I'm always have the soup jumoo at the Valley Mall. And I invite everyone to try the soup jumoo and come try the legume, come try some good Haitian food. I got this for you, so when you see me, say sak passe and I say napoli, one love.
I failed to, uh, yes, sir? The big, the big guy in the back cooks all the yummy food at the Broadway, too. All right, Michelle, you ready?
Sure.
Next up is our FY two thousand and twenty-six budget review with Michelle and Brooke. Is Brooke here?
Yeah, Brooke is here.
Okay.
And thank you. We're cognizant, we'll be cognizant of the time, I promise, right? Because we have a packed agenda. It's, uh, lots of things happening one-on-one. But we do want to take the opportunity, thank everybody again for having an extra meeting last week. We appreciate it. Later on this evening, we are scheduled to do the introduction for both the budget and for the fiscal year twenty-six proposed tax rate increase. But in the meantime, we have moved on from the general fund. We covered some of the other governmental funds last week. So this week, since it's pretty much the last week we have, we are going to look at four of our largest enterprise funds or business-type funds. And so the difference there is these funds are to be self-supporting, meaning they are not being supported or propped up by taxpayer dollars or by the general fund. And instead, the charges that they are allocating and charging now, if I have a better word, for their individual services like electric, the electricity, what they charge and the rates should cover all of the costs within the individual funds. And I think what we'll do is we're going to start with the parking fund and then head electric, water, and wastewater. And all of the department managers and/or directors are here. So as you have very specific questions, don't hesitate, we'll bring them up. Brooke, you want to start with the parking fund? And we're going to look primarily, I think, in the financial projection section six.
So on page twenty-four, for each of the projections, there's an assumptions page. And this just contains the figures that the projections are based on. So for example, the first bullet on page twenty-four lists the parking rates that are then used to create the revenue projections on page twenty-five. So on page twenty-five, we'll be focusing mostly on the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six proposed budget right in December there, but also looking at the four years projections after, so twenty-seven through thirty. So starting with revenues, about halfway down, you'll see, and these are in thousands, one million four hundred and twenty-one thousand in revenues under total operating revenue, about halfway down. And that can be broken down further above by parking deck revenue and then by each deck, meters and lots, parking enforcement, and other revenues. And then for the projections of revenues for the next four years, under the projection change percent, these are bumped up each year anywhere between about one and a half to two and a half percent.
And just a note, because we haven't looked at this section in a while, and there is a separate enterprise fund section, which looks at less time periods. It doesn't include out-year budget projections, it doesn't include two years of history. But on this page with the parking deck revenue, you'll see individual lines that actually say permits. So under University District Parking Deck, you see parking deck permits versus parking deck fees. And that's literally just a way to differentiate where you can see quickly how much revenue that we are able to realize from charging for monthly permits versus those daily operations where people are coming in in a lot of cash basis, a lot of credit cards, instead of us generating an invoice and billing out. But you can kind of see between the decks, the different activity. And as a reminder, the University District Parking Deck is the largest deck in terms of number of spaces.
And then that can be said for the expenses in the next section down. Each expense is broken out by each deck, parking lots, and parking enforcement. There's nine hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in total operating expense. So your cash operating income at that is four hundred and seventy-eight, minus depreciation, which is a non-cash expense, brings us to a loss of thirty-five thousand dollars. Underneath that are non-operating expenses and revenues, so things like interest and transfers. Then on the next page, twenty-six.
Can we stop just one quick second? So at the very bottom of that page, the loss of four hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. It says increased, decreased, and retained earnings. So for those that own businesses, that is your gain or loss, right? Your surplus or your deficit. It's how much you have in revenue over or under your expenses for the year. And so since this is a business-type fund, we actually, on the second page, will then also convert it to take it back so you can kind of see where you would be from a business standpoint and how you typically report your numbers. A loss of four hundred and ninety-eight thousand to, sorry, Brooke, go to the next page.
So this is converting it to a cash basis. So we add back depreciation, account for principal payments on long-term debt and capital outlay, which brings us to a net deficit of three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, which you can see right at the bottom there. And then underneath that, you'll see beginning cash balance and ending cash balance. So we're projecting one point So we're projecting one point one million to start FY twenty six. When Michelle and I look today, we're at one point two million, so we're trending pretty nicely there. And then after, uh, at the end of FY twenty six, we're projecting seven hundred and eighty six thousand in cash. So then from there, if you go to the right, over to FY twenty nine, you can see that's when we start to eat into our cash balance. So we have a negative two hundred and seventy nine thousand dollars in FY twenty nine and negative six hundred and eight thousand and thirty.
So the, again, the difference here, this net surplus deficit, surplus or deficit, is an indication of what is happening with the cash designated strictly within this fund. So in fiscal year twenty six, we're anticipating that expenses are going to outpace your ongoing or incoming revenues for that specific year. And then as Brooke has covered on the back, all the items that get us back to a cash basis, all those things that we accounted for, like depreciation, we're not really using money to pay for depreciation. So all those things, again, to consider, what is the cash impact on the parking fund? A negative three hundred and fifteen thousand. And Brooke, remind me, when do we pay our first annual debt service payment?
The first.
So the very first debt service payment for the hub parking deck will not occur in fiscal year twenty five, will occur in fiscal year twenty six. The reason we wanted to look at the projections is so that you can see in the out-year. Now, this assumes that, again, the trends that we are seeing right now when the revenue will continue, we're not, we've got modest increases in, whether that's changing of rates or adjustment of rates or changes in the overall impact of utilization across the decks. We have not yet had the hub parking deck open for an entire year. That will happen come July. So next budget cycle, when we come back at the table and look at your out-year projections, we should have a better idea and have more data of the impact of the changes that we've done, one, on the rates, and two, the impact of having the deck for, the new deck for an entire year. Think as Eric has mentioned, Eric Deike, um, a couple meetings ago, you know, hub parking deck, our newest deck, doesn't, it's utilized and was utilized more heavily as we anticipated when the actual ball season occurred, but the months that we didn't have, um, the ball season, we've seen very minimal utilization there. So again, parking deck, parking fund, permits versus, um, permits versus the fees where they're just doing daily. And again, you can see a lot of information here, um, and we will keep watch and we'll come back with suggestions so that hopefully your cash balance doesn't go to negative. But again, when we're looking at adding those debt service requirements and as they start to occur, if our revenue for the entirety of the parking fund has to help cover that debt service requirements. I'm sorry, I probably took away from Brooke. Also, on page twenty six, Brooke, I'm really sorry, it's getting too far away for you to tap me to be quiet. In the middle of the section, it says capital outlay. So this is just an indication of all of the CIP projects that the parking fund has anticipated. If you go to the capital improvement, section seven, just like we, we did when we talked about the general fund, all of their projects will be there and it will be a detailed sheet. And again, we have the little C numbers, so we say parking facilities, third parking deck is C zero one seven three. Again, after hub is finished, we anticipate that we're going to have minimal, uh, capital items to, that we're going to continue to contribute over the next couple of years. But if you want to see the detail, you could go to that section, to that individual sheet to see what was planned for each of those out-years. Any questions on parking before we move to the electric fund?
There's been a question, but I think it is important to point out that while you say that your expectation is that revenues, you know, continue to maintain a healthy, uh, you know, marginal increase, you haven't, you've got fairly marginal increases in expense uniformly across, you know, the fact that we have, you know, a multitude of decks now, but on the capital side, you have, you have nothing. I mean, there, there's barely anything in there on page twenty six in that middle section. So it, and, and you're drawing your reserves down to pay for the fact that you're losing three hundred thousand dollars a year, is what you're doing.
Correct.
With the hope that, that you don't have to fix anything while you draw your savings account down, right? It's sort of like.
Yes.
Like, like you're paying your mortgage, you know what I mean?
Yes.
With your savings account, hoping that the refrigerator doesn't take a crap and you've got to replace the refrigerator.
Yeah.
I just note that for all the folks that come in and say, you know, well, you can just cut your rates because you're making money. You're not making money. You're spending the money you had.
Yes.
Hoping that you're gonna make money and not have anything break along the way.
Our parking lots are in pretty good shape. We've replaced all the lights over the last few years, they're all LEDs, so we expect them to last, have a longer lifespan, uh, reusing funds and, um, sometimes highway using revenue, actually repave, repaves our parking lots, so our lots are in pretty decent shape, all the lights are in pretty decent shape. The UD deck, uh, we actually have an engineer who's going to give us a report here, probably next sixty days, just an, um, evaluation of the prod, of the garage. UD deck, we put about three hundred thousand dollars in in twenty thirteen to rehab it, which was some concrete repairs and a coating on the roof and a bunch of caulk and things like that. He's also going to do an evaluation of the A and E garage, which opened in January of two thousand and seven. So we'll use those two reports to generate CIPs for the coming years. Until we have those reports, we're not sure what needs to be fixed. A and E's still in really good shape. UD, of course, was opened in nineteen eighty six, so it's got some age on it. So we're expecting some more repairs and stuff, but we don't know what those are or cost-wise at this time. And of course, hub is new, all that equipment is new and that sort of thing. But you don't have a lot of HVAC and plumbing and mechanicals and that sort of thing in the garages. So we put in there what we think we're gonna do now, but we know there's other things coming. But it's a, it's a good point, you're exactly right, we are, um, but we have spent a fair amount of money in the last few years, bringing everything up, you know, in good shape and keeping it well-maintained.
Okay, so we're gonna talk about the electric fund for a minute. Um, and we're gonna stay in the same section, in the financial projection section, section six, page sixteen. I'm gonna cover a little bit of information here, and then I am going to notate and, um, point out a chart that we have elsewhere in the budget that actually is a comparison of rates, because I, I know and I appreciate and I, you know, we hear about the increases the city is doing, right? You're increasing everything, um, and yes, but I, I do still want to show a comparison because I'm cognizant of the fact that we're raising the rates, but we're actually doing it to cover the expenses and we're attempting to still maintain, um, our infrastructure and make sure we're making the necessary improvements while trying to balance that with being as cost efficient as possible. So the electric fund on page sixteen, the picture for this fund isn't quite what it is for parking. The electric fund, before we start looking at any of the numbers, I just want to say the electric fund is a little bit different from any of the other funds here, because we are governed by the PSC, the Public Services Commission, on what we can do for rates. As far as the rates themselves in the electric fund, boil it down to basically two, two, two main components or areas. One is, uh, cost of purchase power, which is a cost that we contract with a third party. And as they pass the cost to us, we pass those rates on to the, um, customers. Those rates have fluctuated, and those rates have fluctuated, um, up and down every single year without fail. What was different and, and occurred in the current fiscal year twenty five for electric is that the city also had to take a step back and look at the other items. There are cost of service or cost of retail rates and look at the other component, right? The other component of our rates is to cover our city services, our employees, it should cover your infrastructure, it should cover everything else, and that had not been adjusted in decades. So that's the portion of the rates that were just adjusted. It's a portion of the rates that the PSC governs and the PSC actually gives us the approval on what we, how much we can and what our rate sets will be. So in saying all of that, let's take a look at the electric department, let's look in the middle of the page, we have two years of actual detail, right? Columns fiscal year twenty three and twenty four, so you can see two years of actual history compared to just one. But that middle column is fiscal year twenty six proposed budget, and at the very top, we've got service charges at thirty three point nine million, so just shy of thirty four. We have a little bit of other revenues, and then we're gonna start with the expenses. So again, I want to take just a moment. When we look at those operating expense line, you see the first one says purchase power. It's twenty six point six million. That is how much we are paying to those third-party vendors, our wholesale power contractor. It is and represents seventy eight percent of all of the service charges. I'll say that number again, seventy eight percent. That means out of all the other expenses, we have twenty two percent left, right? And all of that revenue to cover everything else. All right, so overall total operating. So in the middle, you see that says, at the top, it says operating expenses, there's three lines, purchase power, and in the middle column for twenty six budget, it says twenty six million five hundred and seventy. Okay, so the rest of that, where it says distribution line item, in general and administrative, that's everything else. What we pay our contractor to go out and do, um, tree services for us, what we're including with our staff, what we are paying for, um, for supplies. So that, that, the other two amounts represent that. So in total, expenses are at thirty three point eight million, that's what we're anticipating. Come halfway down the page, you'll see, in the middle of the page halfway, increased, decreased and retained earnings. We're anticipating in fiscal year twenty six that we will have a ninety seven thousand dollar loss. Again, in fiscal year twenty six, we're anticipating a ninety seven thousand dollar loss, meaning revenue is coming in, gonna be less than our expenses going out. Not necessarily the direction you want to go. The rest in the bottom of this page is just like we saw in the parking fund. So we are looking at everything that's in that top section, things that do not have an impact on your cash balance, and we're adjusting, either adding or subtracting. So three quarters of the way down, you see net surplus deficit, and again, fiscal year twenty six budget, a negative three point two million. So I want to be clear, a negative three point two million dollar impact to cash. As you will see, we're anticipating in the fiscal year twenty six budget, we're gonna start in the electric fund with a negative cash balance. And because unless anything else changes, we are going to increase that negative cash balance and have an ending balance of four million. As of right now, May twentieth, we have an unrestricted cash balance of a negative one point nine million. And so everybody can say, Michelle, it's panic mode, what do we do? No, the city of Hagerstown has a pooled cash account. It simply means that on June thirtieth, when we end our fiscal year, no individual fund can show a negative cash. We will have to do a cash advance, not do a loan, not do a transfer. We will do a cash advance on June thirty, which will be reversed on July one. So yes, we have to overcome this hurdle, right? We can't expect to contribute and invest in infrastructure. We can't expect that, that Nathan, our operations manager, deputy director, I'm very, very horrible with titles, so please forgive me, but we can't expect him to invest a million dollars every year in these AMI meter items which are needed and be able to do it by not adjusting and changing any of the other rates. Again, the rates that are a very small component of this. So all of this to say that, you know, the cost of rate study that was done and the adjustment that was done with the PSC is something that we need to make sure that we're doing on the electric side. And we said it at the time and we acknowledged it, for whatever the reason, we were not looking at the electric fund like we do with the water and wastewater fund, which we adopt the rates and set them here at this table with this, this body, this administration. It's at a different level, but we have to start looking at them on a more routine basis. You cannot expect to go decades without increasing that and still having the cash available to invest in your infrastructure. And I say all of that, and all of this happens with full-time staff count of twenty nine people, twenty nine. Keep that in mind. We had a major storm back on Easter, seventy percent of our customers were without power, twenty nine people. And that doesn't mean twenty nine out in the field, that means twenty nine in their entirety. Okay, so there is a section, section three, the enterprise fund section. So in section three, which is the enterprise fund section, laid out similar to the general fund, except for individual departments, we look at individual funds. And I want us to look at page six for just a moment. And I'm very sorry for those at home, we don't, don't have the chart available, we certainly can do that. And the reason I want to take us to page six in this section is for the electric fund at the very top, you're gonna see a comparison of service charges, and you're gonna see many people, um, and organizations that we compare our rates to. We are not, we're not picking the ones that are charging the most to make the city of Hagerstown look good. We are charging and putting a comparison here of all that's in impacts in this specific community in which we're at, in our neighboring. And if you see, city of Hagerstown, Hagerstown Light Department, seventy seven dollars and twenty six cents, so that, that is an average, right? Again, compared to what others are charging. So when you look at Borough of Chambersburg, when you look at Potomac Edison, when you look at, um, Pepco, and again, knowing that not every resident who lives within the city of Hagerstown is able to utilize the Hagerstown Light Department in our electric fund, because they may be outside of our light boundary, the rates that those citizens are paying and enjoy are not the same as those residents inside. And again, we can't grow that boundary, um, but when you look at this, it's very telling on what our staff is able to do and what we're able to achieve and provide to our residents that do live inside that boundary versus those that are outside. We're gonna walk through the other funds, water and wastewater. There's similar charts and rate comparisons for both of them in this same section, but I want to take a minute to stop, because it's a lot to digest. Electric fund is different, I want you to have an opportunity to ask questions if you have them, or provide feedback.
So just a quick question, the PSC governs our, um, purchase power, like the rates?
So the PSC governs our other rates. Our purchase power is based on our wholesale contract, but I don't, we'll let Nathan do a better, better job than Michelle can explain it.
I'm sorry, I missed the question.
So I guess I was just asking, does PSC govern our, uh, purchase power rates?
Yeah, the purchase power rate is, um, competitively bid, uh, through our consultant and compared to other suppliers, and, and we, we grabbed the best price at the time. The PSC does evaluate it after the fact, but, um, no, they don't, um, they don't participate in the process.
And so we have an expert consultant and additional attorneys who specialize in nothing but negotiating those types of contracts, because they are, they are extremely detailed and very different than a normal contract negotiation.
For me, it's helpful for me to know three things about the electric fund that are unique, because we're one of very few municipalities that still have a municipal electric utility system. Uh, the first is the PSC sort of governs how much money we're allowed to make, right? I mean, they kind of say, your, your rates are reasonable, you know, for, for how you're applying them to your customer base.
Right.
Uh, you know, they don't let you sort of grow it in a manner that just lets you pocket cash, you know, grossly above what it costs to deliver electricity, because they sort of see electricity as one of those quasi-things that people should have access to. To that effect, unlike water and sewer, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, we have to write down, right, or write off. So if somebody, you know, if somebody owes a bill after, I think it's fifteen years, I could be wrong, we don't get to collect that anymore. So water and sewer, like, we have the ability to collect that in perpetuity, because PSC doesn't regulate that, uh, it isn't treated the same. So that, to me, is, is another important issue. So the third thing. So the third thing is we're able to sell electricity so much more cheap. By the way, I'm one of the people that's outside of the old boundary. And that boundary was set when when we gave up creating electricity and and bought it from somebody else, if I'm not mistaken. And they basically said, you can't, you know, we'll agree to do that with you and sell it to you, but you're not going to be able to sell it outside this box. That is the city at that time. We want the customers outside the box. And so that's how that came about. But because we're able to buy it in such large quantity, then we're able to get it so much cheaper. So we're like the Walmart of buying electricity, right? Whereas my house is sort of like the sheets of buying electricity. And so I, you know what I mean? I I get to buy it at at a higher rate.
And we don't, we don't, we don't have earnings to pass on to the investors like the investor utilities do.
Right.
Are those contracts bid on annually? Are they?
It's based on based on the contract terms. So our next our current contract is expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. And actually tonight on the agenda, we're asking that we provide the director utilities approval to sign off on the contract should we in any time here soon find a good price for for our customers at the wholesale rate.
And I would be remiss if we didn't just take a moment to mention, you know, I I gave an astounding figure of the current day negative cash balance. Part of the reason for that cash balance is a result of the storm that occurred and the damage in the infrastructure and some of the other things that we had to pay out. Yes, so we've been paying out some things and and we will be bringing back in June. So what occurred was, you know, you had the storm and we do have a purchasing policy, but in the event of an emergency, myself, the CFO and the city administrator can provide emergency approval for departments to move forward and spend funds. And then we will subsequently come back to mayor and council to still get that authorized. But acknowledging that happens after the fact. And in this instance, it had to happen because we had we had need of subcontractors. Again, twenty-nine people, okay, twenty-nine people is all we have. And that isn't all of those twenty-nine can't be out working the lines that were down. So Brooke, do you have a rough, and this is a rough estimate before we got everything?
It's six hundred and forty-three thousand, but that also, that's not just electric.
That was total. And then the public utility piece was four hundred and seventy-six.
There you go.
Roughly.
That was the number I was.
But water, I believe, water and wastewater as well.
So it's almost four, it was close to four hundred thousand dollars is what we were estimating on the electric at the point that the storm initially, right? We're going to continue to see those costs come in timing-wise. The but from now until the end of the month, we'll get better. We had a big payment out that we do for the purchase power, right? Pay that out and then charge you get the get the money collected on the back. But thank you for pointing those three items out. Councilor O'Shaire, they're correct. Anybody else have any questions? One Nathan's still here.
I do. So can you explain that seventy-eight percent again? And then you said from that, it's the twenty-two percent that's left. And that's the percentage that you should help pay the staff.
So purchase power in fiscal year twenty-six with where the current contract is. And again, it's going, the current contract is going to expire in the middle of fiscal year twenty-six, December twenty twenty-six. Is twenty-six point, almost six million dollars. Purchase power line, that is dollar for dollar, all that that represents is what we pay that wholesale.
The third part. Okay.
And then out of all of our revenue, our service charges at the top, again, service charges, what we're charging our customers, which is the thirty-three point nine million or the thirty-four million. So of our thirty-four million, of everything that we're charging is coming in the door, seventy-eight percent is initially going out in the form of we have to pay this contractor, seventy-eight percent. That leaves only twenty-two percent for all other expenditures. Whatever they are, infrastructure, staffing, that's all that you've got left, right? All your dollars coming in.
And was that?
Which is a small amount, right?
So like just for example, that what some of that was like what we when we did the contract for other people to come in during that storm, that's coming from that as well?
Yes, so that that it covers everything. It covers payroll and benefits for our IBEW union group that falls underneath this umbrella. It covers, we have every year contract with a a tree service group. Go out and trees, right?
Yeah.
It's an important part of maintaining and keeping our infrastructure safe. And it includes certainly those costs that we paid to the others that have come in. Now that's hopefully a cost that will not reap or right. We're hoping that doesn't happen again in fiscal twenty-six. But yes, it would be part of the twenty-two percent. It's nothing that we can recoup through that purchase power agreement and the purchase power rate. So it's it's a class that we're absorbing that we don't have a way to charge right now.
Yeah, PSC will look at the most recent audited financials. Which right now, our most recent audited financials are the FY twenty-four, which ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. So even when the PSC does look at our our rates and our proposals and make sure they're, you know, just a reasonable raise for customers, they're looking at a year and a half behind. They're looking at past numbers.
And we're expecting that come August of twenty twenty, whatever year we're in, twenty twenty-five, that there's going to be another hit, right? Nathan?
We'll have another meter shipment coming in expected.
Again, based on things outside of our control. So are we good with electric? So I haven't got to water anyways. Thank you, Nathan. We haven't got to water and wastewater fund. I can, we can keep going and we can cover them really quick. I will, I will say, I always try to keep my timer here to acknowledge I am at the window of how long we have been allotted to five fifteen when the when the agenda. But this is your meeting, so you tell me, are we wanting to cover water and wastewater? Good.
I think we should be able to just have, you know, our own moments ago for what you just explained. I mean, if there's one, we'll continue with wastewater, I'm fine with it.
What would the group like to do? So water and wastewater, the difference there, they are utility funds. We're anticipating bigger dollars for infrastructure that is going to be needed and upgraded. Anticipating that they have positive cash flow, that we're going to be utilizing a lot of our cash. Also acquiring some new bond debt through the state of Maryland in order to help make the infrastructure work in the out years. Again, not not necessarily a healthy picture where we are now. But the rates are set and established by this administration and this group. Rates for water and wastewater are set for fiscal year twenty-five, current year and fiscal year twenty-six. They were already previously approved, so we know what they will be. But later this summer, Nancy will be coming back with our contractor, right? The rate consultant to sit and develop what that foundation looks like and what the rate structure is moving forward, water and wastewater. So there will be more opportunity coming to discuss water and wastewater if you wish to do that. But again, if there's anything that we wish to look at or discuss with them before. I mean, we're both both Brooke and I are here as well as Nancy. This is your meeting and I just want to be very respectful of your time. That's all.
Well, you want to do counsel?
Do you guys want to move on to, or you want to stay on electric? I'm going to move on, but I do want to, if we do move on, can we at least acknowledge the comparisons for the wastewater and wastewater too for?
Because I think again, our our charts speak volumes, right? So let's go to section three. Let's look at these comparison, these rate charts, and then we'll move on away from budget to more exciting things, right? Although what could be more exciting than budget? So section three. Going to look at the chart for the water fund. And this is on page fourteen. So the numbers here on the comparison. Brooke nor myself, nobody in my department actually compiles that data. We rely on Nancy and her staff. But at the very top, you'll see the information and again, comparison of rates as of March twenty twenty-five. The city of Hagerstown here is ironically the lowest. In order to come up with what the comparison is for the rates in this chart, we are assuming it's residential customers, what we're looking at using thirteen thousand gallons of water per quarter. So you can see the city of Hagerstown, the one on the far left, thirty-seven oh five. And again, that should be based on current rates in in place. The one next closest to us would be one oh five, six, one hundred and five dollars and sixty-three cents, which would be the city of Frostburg. So here, unlike in the electric fund, our comparisons are a lot of other towns, municipalities in the surrounding area, right? So again, when we look and you look to the far right, one of the most expensive in our comparison charts is at a hundred and forty-nine ninety-one. And that's the city of Martinsburg. Compared to thirty-seven dollars and five cents, the city of Hagerstown took the market.
So.
I mean, it's like a seventy percent.
So a couple of things on water. The first is we give it away. There is no governmental entity that I have found that gives away its water the way we do. We just do. Not only do we give it away at an absolutely cheap cost, cheaper than anybody around. Partly because, you know, we decided a hundred and some years ago to build a system and others did not, meaning build a system on the Potomac. But we do what a lot of other governmental entities do, hence my desire for a rate study. We give it away backward, meaning the more you use, the less you pay for it. The bigger the customer, the cheaper it is. Eh, sort of like a business does when it sells things to Walmart. Other governmental entities don't do that. They either flat fee it so that everybody pays, you know, the same amount across the board, or because it is a limited or finite resource, they charge more the more you use. We've never done any of that. And this shows it. And so, you know, it's easy to report, well, we got a fourteen percent increase. And that sounds like a big number. But if you take the combined increase of fourteen percent on the water side and fourteen percent on the sewer side, you're talking, well, it's thirteen thirteen point three, you're roughly talking about to the average customer, fifteen to sixteen dollars a month, a quarter. Right, thirty-seven and like a hundred and or eighty-five or something. So that puts you at roughly five to seven dollars more a month. I just when I look at other water systems, there just isn't, there isn't the same comparison. And I use and I use the other reason that that I talk about this as it applies. You know, so we sell it to three other towns. We sell it to Funktown, we sell it to Williamsport, and we sell it to Smithsburg. We sell the finished product to those entities. And they increase their resale of that same water five to seven times higher than we sell it for. Depending on whether you're in or outside the jurisdiction. And so it just, so we're selling for forty bucks, they're selling for ninety to a hundred and fifty bucks. And so like something in the grand scheme of how we manage these two systems, as it applies to the rates, as it applies to the structure of those agreements, they just have to change because I think that there's efficiencies that can be accomplished. And so when I read those numbers within 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 the book, and I recognize that over the next ten-year period, you have about two hundred million dollars worth of of various investments in that system to make in order to keep providing that resource. You know, at the quality and stability that you're doing it. We've got to revisit that that structure and and I I don't lose, you know, any sleep or have any heartburn over where we're at. Because I think where we're at now is not where we should be when we compare ourselves to the operations and and cost metrics of other systems. Not just within our region, but across the US.
And so as we mentioned earlier, the rates that are established and set for water are done locally by this administration and body. And we will rely on our cost rate consultant to help come up with a structure or a fee to set, right, where your revenue is going to at least meet your expenses. So within the same section, section three, we're going to move forward just a few pages. We're going to go to page twenty-three. Going to talk about wastewater. And again, a chart in the city of Hagerstown here, again, we're assuming the typical customer in this chart for comparison when we compare against other cities and towns, that it is a residential customer with a usage of thirteen thousand gallons per quarter. So on the far left is the city of Hagerstown at a hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty-six cents. And it looks like this time, this time to the far right, it's the city of Winchester at two oh three thirty-two. That's more of all of the rest on the chart that is the more expensive. All of these also, both of them have a chart on the bottom and it shows you consumption and it's showing you who's utilizing the majority of the water and the waste water rate. Any questions? Anything you, anybody wants to see? Need feedback on wastewater?
No, I think the only difference between water and wastewater is on the water side, we have probably twice as many, well, we have more customers outside of the city than we do inside. We probably have a double the customer base total, right? Somewhere in that neighborhood. And so on the wastewater side, you know, we share service delivery of the system with the county, whereas on the water side, we're pretty much, you know, the game in town for for the greater Hagerstown area.
The county makes up fifty-five percent of our customer base, but they consume between sixty and sixty-five percent of the water sold. So yes.
On the water side.
On the water side, yeah. On the wastewater side, the majority of wastewater is inside city. The county has their own wastewater systems. And in fact, we've talked about it before, the county will be trans, excuse me, transferring the flow from the Morgansville area back to the county. We anticipate that's going to occur in August if everything goes right with their capital project. And so our customer, county customer base will decrease by just under fifteen hundred customers in our joint service area.
And those customers outside of the city will experience a change in the rate structure for their bills.
Yes, they will.
I think that's important when folks see that and and would like to come in here to voice that concern.
So again, it's a little over fourteen hundred customers, as Nancy mentioned, all in the Morgansville area, if you will, in Morgans Meadow. And we are anticipating that decrease because it means the city will continue to have the majority of them as city water customers, but will no longer be servicing their wastewater. So they'll go from getting one bill, which they're seeing right now per quarter, to after August, seeing two separate bills. One from the city that is water, which will still go quarterly, and one from the county, which will be their wastewater or their sewer, which they bill monthly. So we have been meeting a staff, city and county for a number of months in in the hopes that we can make this as smooth as possible. And once the city does our last billing, which will be again.
First week of August, yes.
We will be sending out not just the bills, but we will separately be sending out communication and a memo to those customers, as well as the county county plans to do the same thing. We just don't wish to do that until we get to the point that everything's good to go.
Correct. And with that loss of revenue, so there's the differential is about one point six. So for so for every city customer, we need one point six city customers to make up the one customer lost on the county as far as revenue. So we are seeing, experiencing a fair amount of growth still in residential customers. Black Rock, which is the Black Rock subdivision, which is now Arbor View, is over six hundred units. Um, Black Rock, which is the Black, Black Rock subdivision, which is now Arbor View, is over six hundred units. Um, they will be outside. Um, the Reese Farm development will be inside, but it will be over, I think, three hundred and thirty eight units, something like that. Uh, Bo Stetter is is moving now, and that's over two hundred units. Um, but so we are seeing those additional customers, um, come online, as well as some of the, um, commercial, uh, non-residential customers, customers, I should say. So, um, pretty confident that we can, if you will, weather that financial storm, um, pretty well with the rates that we have in place. The rates that were adopted actually took that loss in revenue into consideration. So, uh, we should be able to get through that, um, without too much, uh, without seeing too many problems.
Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, but looking at like the service charges, are we not like, um, staying at like competitive rates? Like, for example, for the water fund, our current rate is thirty seven oh five. For us to be even for us to remain competitive, shouldn't we be at one fourteen? And then for the wastewater fund, we're at one seventeen, we would be more competitive if we were at one fifty six? Is that?
And so these charts are literally comparing the average residential customer with the thirteen thousand gallon utilization. So to be fair, in our revenue, right, we do have in the water side and in the wastewater side, customers who use more than that, and we certainly have customers that are outside of the city, right? As Nancy talked, inside city, cost revenue, outside city, rates are different. Um, and then we also have commercial. So yes, and I think it's, it comes back to what Councilmember Alshire was explaining. So the increases when we said water rates were increasing by fourteen percent last July, it it was a staggering number. And and honestly, who wants to hear any increases happening, what they're making payments, right, for a service? It's just that when you look at it and you break it down into the average and what it, the a- actual impact when the average customer inside the city, it's it's huge and significant. So yes, all those things that we were pointing out, what's going to happen is with all the planned infrastructure projects that we need to start doing on the water side, we we're definitely going to have to be looking at the rates and that whole foundation, which is.
And our rates are structured. We have, um, we have our inside rates and our outside rates. So these charts look at the inside city rate and compare it to, um, the rates of folks, uh, of other counties or other, if there's like other inside city rates, like the city of Frostburg. So it's an inside city rate. So that thirty seven dollars in water represents what an inside customer would pay for thirteen thousand gallons of water. If they were an outside customer, they would pay closer to sixty dollars for that same volume of water.
Well, and it's also important to note that that any one of these colors on this chart is apples and oranges, because everybody built their system at different time periods. Everybody has different costs to treat the water, to get the water, to deliver the water. Everybody has a different number of customers. So, you know, I'd love to have eighty thousand customers in Myersville and spread the base rate across eighty thousand customers, but I don't. I have, you know, six hundred and fifty customers, so the base rate's higher. Because if everybody left and went on vacation tomorrow, you'd still have to pay seventy five percent of the cost to staff to run the system. The city of Heggers Town is able to spread that base cost across a lot more customers than a small system like Funkstown or even Frostburg, um, or or Conway, you know what I mean? And so, uh, City of Frederick, they're a much newer system, right, in terms of their connectivity and source, uh, sources they get it from and deliver it. So that's why I say when I look at that, nobody does it cheaper than we do, but I don't know that you could compare it to them specifically as it applies to the dynamics of their operations. Uh, for us, we just shouldn't be doing things, if we know we have this borrowing or infrastructure improvements coming up, we shouldn't be we shouldn't be setting rates within our system that sort of shoot ourselves in the foot as it applies to what the average customer pays, knowing that expectation is out there.
And we are, um, the work is underway. We've provided our consultant, um, all of the data that they've requested, um, to relook at our rates. And and if you remember from February, they're looking at replacing the tiered rates with unit rates, removing class differentials, um, evaluating billing of fixed fees and frontline fees and and those sort of things, just because of some issues we have there. They'll be de- developing an inside joint rate associated with the Bo Stetter development. Um, we're talking about how do we benefit from moving all non-residential customers to monthly? Um, that impacts how our revenue comes in. Um, and then we're also, uh, we'll be taking a a close look at, um, the sewer deduct meters, like the irrigation meters, um, and that sort of thing. Uh, we've approved two of them, so we have to make sure we incorporate that into our rate model so that, um, so that our revenue does not go the wrong way.
And so Nancy mentioned a lot of things, right? And two of the the five sitting here were here in February and probably heard all those terms and know exactly what she's meaning. They will all be covered. So when the consultant comes back and you start looking at how and what do we want our rate structures to look like, right? All those things Councilmember Alshire mentioned. Do you want to continue to have a declining tier for the larger utilization in the larger accounts, or do you want it more flat out? So there'll be an opportunity to discuss all of that so that Nancy can explain it better, because that was a lot of information she just threw at you. I don't want you to think you have to have that, and that you're locking that down in this budget. You're not. You're going to be talking with Nancy and her rate consultant for months coming up.
And the scheduling wise, um, we have asked the rate consultants to have at least the drafts ready, the draft recommendations, not the final recommendation ready, so that as we prepare in budget, um, that that it it can be incorporated into budget so, um, that, uh, once again, we we're on target.
Fiscal year twenty seven budget she's referring to.
Year twenty seven budget, yes. Um, but one of the things the elected body also asks us to do is to make sure to the best, best of our ability that if there was a design, if if the timing came together and there there was a need to adjust the rates, that, um, we would, uh, do our level best to have something ready to adjust, um, the rates mid-year is what, um, the body requested, is to look at them and see if if that was something that we needed to do, um, based on looking at the rates in a completely different way. So that work is also being, that request is also being evaluated.
Can more than one draft be presented or?
Yes, um, uh, what what was asked of staff was to, uh, to create or to work with our consultant to come up with, um, multiple ways that the way we've been doing it since two thousand and five, maybe that's not the best way. So we will be looking at inclining tiers, de- declining tiers, uh, just a single tier system, um, different ways, um, to, uh, assess, um, water and wastewater rates, um, across our entire customer base. And of course, that means we'll look at residential, non-residential, um, a- as well as wholesale.
So there will be lots of opportunity to continue discussions specifically. And, you know, next week is a regular session. If there's, if you wish to cover like water and wastewater or have more specific budget conversations, can always ask our mayor to add thirty minutes, thirty five minutes for us, just to walk through that if you would like.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody feel good with budget?
Yeah.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, moving on to our preliminary agenda, our preliminary agenda review, I'll try and get through this as quick as I can. Next week, we'll have a call to order. We'll have an invocation, pledge, pledge to the flag. We'll have our announcements, rules of procedure effective December seventeenth, twenty twenty four. Use of cell phones during meetings is restricted. All correspondence for distribution to elected officials should be provided to the city clerk and should include a copy for the city clerk for inclusion in the official record. Our meeting schedule moving forward is Tuesday, June third, twenty twenty five, is a work session at four P M. Tuesday, June tenth, twenty twenty five, work session at four P M. And Tuesday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty five, regular session at seven P M. There'll be no meeting on June twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, as we have our M M L summer conference. Um, I would like to ask everybody before we move on to appointments, um, about moving our meeting schedule up. All right, I'll revisit that. I'll come back. We'll have appointments through our ethics commission. Um, we'll have guests. If I were mayor essay contest, the students from Mount Elementary School. We'll have agenda items, citizen comments. The comments on the agenda items shall be limited to topics listed for consideration on the agenda and limited to three minutes. We'll go over our minutes, April first, twenty twenty five, April eighth, twenty twenty five, April fifteenth, twenty twenty five, and April twenty second, twenty twenty five. We'll have our consent agenda, uh, construction testing under engineering first, construction, testing and inspection contrast, contract, try it engineering, Heggers Town, Maryland. Um, sidewalk accessibility ramps, F I, F Y twenty six, J T Rock Excavating LLC, not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Urban sidewalk replacement program, Concrete Central LLC, not to exceed two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Um, blanket purchase order for trash and recycling carts, Rary Pacific Company, one hundred thousand dollars. Under finance, we have a utility bill processing and mailing, Arista Information Systems, two hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars. Under police, engineering survey work for Fiber Loops, Pennsylvania Networks, twenty four thousand, two hundred and twenty five dollars. Lock safety platform and implementation, lock safety, fourteen thousand, eight hundred dollars. Access license, plat cameras and licenses, Spiker Security Services, ten thousand, nine hundred and seventy three dollars and seventy cents. Blue Stream Equipment, Spiker Security Services, twenty four thousand, nine hundred and ninety three dollars and eight cents. Under Public Works, we'll have multiple pairs to unit ninety three, street, street sweeper, I say that five times in a row. Uh, Maryland Industrial Trucks Incorporated, eighteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty seven dollars and seventy five cents. Under utilities, uh, light, additional funding approval for F Y twenty five Vegetation Management Services, N G Gilbert Services, fifty thousand dollars. Under light is F Y twenty six Blanket Contract Vegetation Management Services, Xylem Tree Experts LLC, three hundred and eighty two thousand, five hundred dollars. Uh, F Y twenty six Blanket Contract Substation Maintenance, T R C Companies, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. F Y Blanket Contract for Line Work Services, Diamond Electric, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. F Y twenty six Blanket Contracts, Electric Equipment Refur- uh, Refurbishment, Southeastern Transformer Company, seventy five thousand dollars. F Y twenty six Blanket Contract Regulatory Consulting Services Light, F Y twenty six Blanket Contract Consulting Services, a hundred and ninety five thousand dollars. F Y twenty six Blanket Contract Electric Underground Locating, U S I C Locating Services, sixty thousand dollars. Uh, F Y twenty six Blanket Contract Flame Resistant Clothing, Hudson Workwear, twenty eight thousand, five hundred dollars. And last and last one under light is F Y twenty six Blanket Contract Software Support, Mile, Milsoft Utility Solutions, forty seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty five dollars. Underwater will be double check detector assemblies, uh, Ferguson Enterprises LLC, forty eight thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars. Security Gate Upgrade, one fifty one Park Avenue, Mid-Atlantic Entry, Maryland LLC, nineteen thousand, nineteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty six dollars. MagnaFlock Polymer Coin Environment, forty eight thousand, six hundred dollars. Chlorinator Maintenance Environmental Service and Equipment Company, L T D, eleven thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars. V F D Module Spare Part, Industrial Service Solutions, seventeen thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. Upgrade of Toshiba, two V F Ds at R C W, Industrial Service Solutions, two hundred and thirty five thousand, forty five dollars. Motor Control Center Maintenance Contract, Capital Electric, forty thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Forklift for R C W, W T P. Heister Yale Materials Handling Incorporated, thirty eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty four dollars. S C A D A Generator Replacement at R C W, W T P, Fidelity Power Systems, forty one thousand, three hundred and thirty one dollars and two cents. Utility Breaker for R C W Water Plant, Capital Electric, twenty three thousand, five hundred dollars. Flow Meter Replacement, Heggers Town Wastewater Treatment Plant, Callis Contractors, five hundred and ninety nine thousand, four hundred dollars. Annual Pelletizer Operations Contract and Asset Management Fees, NEFCO Centigrade Row, one million, seven hundred thousand, seven hundred and four dollars and twenty two cents. And tree trimming and removal contract change order, number one, N G Gilbert Services, twenty five thousand dollars. All right, since everybody's here, before I go to unfinished business, I'm going to go back to our meeting schedule. Um, next week, in order to get our fiscal budget or our budget in on time, we were, we're planning to move our meeting up. So in time, so, um, I need to have direction from council where, what time is good for everyone here?
I'll start.
Go ahead.
I have two issues.
Do it.
So, uh, the high school moved baccalaureate services to tonight. Just letting you know that. Sorry, leaving here to go to attend that. Um, I am sure you guys can handle the introduction process without a council member, uh, present. And then Tuesday of next week, we're talking about, uh, you're talking about moving, uh, that portion of the meeting to a different time.
Yeah, moving it to earlier.
I'm happy to move it.
The whole meeting, the whole meeting will start at that point, once we move, once we consider a time.
Um, I'm happy to move it to whatever you guys, uh, would suggest. I would just note that I have, uh, graduation ceremony. That evening, so.
That's another reason why we're, we're considering moving it up.
I I apologize that this is, you know, part of the process of life.
What it's, what about three o'clock? Is that early enough?
Yes.
What time is graduation?
Five, me.
Oh, yeah, what time is graduation?
Six thirty.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not graduating, so I don't need to be there till six thirty.
Well, the only, the only, the only reason I'm saying is because we got a lot of, uh, for next week. Yeah, I'm good with three.
You have to be on time.
Everybody else go with three?
Yeah.
I'm gonna get three.
I'm not in.
Oh, that's right. You three, okay. Do it three o'clock?
That's fine. She has a big smile. She's like, three o'clock sounds great.
No.
Okay. So three o'clock, it's set for next week.
We may not have the students here at that time. So what we would try to do is bring them in into.
Oh, yeah.
How's our mayor's student?
I don't see them.
I have doubts if they're going to be here at three o'clock.
Well, I mean, we can do, could we move, move them closer to the end?
We can. I'll have, um, one gentleman stop to them.
Okay.
And we'll see if we can get them booked in at some point.
Okay. All right. Um, moving on, unfinished business, we'll have an approval of inordinates, B O M test, tax amendment, approval of inordinates cannabis related L M C tax amendments, approval of inordinates quit claim, Washington County Museum of Fine Arts, approval of inordinates tax rate beginning July first, twenty twenty five, and approval of inordinates, uh, budget F Y twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. New business, we'll have an introduction of inordinates, outdoor lodging, approval of a resolution, Community Rescue Service Fuel Cost Reimbursement Agreement, approval of a resolution, Safe Streets for All Safety Action Plan, approval of resolution, license agreement with Antina Paper Company, and approval of resolutions, lease agreement with University Maryland, University System of Maryland Heggers Town for sixty West Washington Street, approval of a resolution authorizing approval to apply for Main Street Improvement Program Grant, approval of inventory procurement funds, approval of authorize the Director of Utilities to to secure wholesale power supply teams, approval for Heggers Town Police Department to accept the S F Y twenty five Burn Justice Assistant Grant in the amount of twenty five thousand dollars for technology enhancements. Approval of F Y twenty six additional G F transfers. enhancements, approval of FY26 additional GF transfers for Hagerstown Field House, approval of amendment request for RFP for upper floor market rate housing grant program, approval of amendment request for RFP for strategic properties grant program, approval of guidelines and application for middle neighborhood emergency repair grants, approval of flying boxcar fireworks event on July 4, 2025. My mouth's getting tired. General citizen comments, general citizen comments are welcome and reiterate that it shall be limited to three minutes. We'll have city administrator comments, mayor, council comments, and then we will adjourn.
I can add, point out just three things on the agenda. There are three things we're moving to June. One is under the engineering consent agenda, the burnout parking lot construction, that'll be moved to June for consideration. Under police consent agenda, the consultant to review operations for HPD, that also will be moved to June for consideration. And then, under new business, the procurement for contractual services to assist with the emergency storm restoration, that's with the coverage for the outside contractors that came in the night of the storm, and they're still waiting on one invoice, because they're going to do that as a whole. And Nathan is confident he'll have that for the June approval.
Okay. All right, next up, we have Safe Streets for All Safety Action Plan, Jim Bender.
I think I can do this very quickly. I was here in April and presented to the city council our draft safety action plan that our consultant team put together. It looked at ways to try to reduce or minimize fatalities and serious injuries on our streets here in the city. After that council presentation, we opened a 30-day public comment period. We also held a public meeting to present the plan at the Washington County Free Library on April 23. At the end of the comment period, we received, I believe, 10 comments, and I attached those to the memos, as you could see what people were commenting on. And they have been incorporated into the final safety action plan. So I can certainly go through the plan again and answer any questions that you have. Nothing has really changed since the draft plan was reviewed with you. And if you don't have any questions, then my plan would be to bring a motion next week at council meeting to adopt this plan. And as part of the process, there actually has to be a resolution that goes with that. That's one of the federal requirements, and I think that Donna had.
They're actually still right here.
Yeah, okay.
Here's an update.
Yeah, the resolution that was attached to the memo, Jason Morton wanted to tweak a couple of things with it, so there is a revised version of that resolution. So really, I'm here just to answer any questions or review anything that you still have questions about in the plan.
Just briefly go over high level, what the comments were regarding the plan.
Sure. I think that most of the comments that I reviewed were taking issue with some of the countermeasures that the consultant team had proposed. For instance, one that I think there were a number of comments on was making Antietam Street one way. I think there was, I don't know if they are published comments, but I certainly received emails and phone calls from people that were saying, this is a, this is a very bad idea, why would you consider that? There were also some comments about proposed roundabouts at different places that didn't, the people commenting, it didn't really make sense to try to do a roundabout. And then there were just some general comments, you know, some more positive, just saying, thank you, safety is important, we're glad that you're looking at this. We also had a comment from someone that's outside of the city, talking about an issue that's out of Morgansville, which really is outside the scope of our plan, but it was a comment, so it's included in the final document.
Now, is Antietam one way still considered in the draft plan?
It's still, it is still one of the proposed countermeasures to deal with the Antietam Street corridor, that's in the, it's in the final safety action plan. But I guess I would remind the council that I'm treating this plan more as a menu of options, things that we could do to address safety considerations here in town. It's not, it's not necessarily a plan that says we are going to do each one of these countermeasures. So it's there as an option. Certainly, the Antietam Street part of this would require a lot of engineering study to see if it's feasible and look at other issues that may cause if we would do that. So I think it's, it makes sense that it's in the plan because there have been a number of accidents on Antietam Street. It was, it's on the high injury network, one of the corridors that has a lot of accidents. So from that standpoint, it's appropriate to talk about it. But the, taking the next step down and actually doing a countermeasure is something that we would have to really study before we did that.
I think that's important to note because I have received feedback particularly about Fuller West Street, and the comments were not in favor of it because to them, they thought this was the yes, we're going to do these options, instead of it being like a menu of options that's available. So thank you for pointing that out.
Sure.
So this, to reiterate, this is a blanket approval for us to go and move forward and do everything within here, but more to provide a guide work and to give us opportunity to bring items back for further discussion, studies, and just a general starting point of areas to focus and have those further deliberations.
And the other reason that it's important to have an adopted safety action plan is that allows us now to apply for additional funding, major funding from the federal government to work on some of these projects or work on our infrastructure. And that, and the deadline for that is actually have to have it submitted by the end of June.
Very soon.
So I almost need to, if we're going to apply for that funding, you almost need to have an adopted plan before that.
And while originally, you know, it was one of those things where this would be a, an area of federal funds for years and years and years to come, I do not think that is any longer necessarily the thought or the feeling, right? So that we did the first step, we did the plan, and we were able to do it with securing of federal grant, didn't cover 100% of the cost, but it covered the majority. And then the next step, while there is still funding available, would be for us to try to apply so that we can get monies to actually help do the implementation portion while the funding is still available. And again, federal funds will not cover 100% of anything we're talking about, no matter, no matter if they said, okay, go do them all, here's, sky's the limit, still wouldn't cover 100% of items.
Right. So this was part of the Bipartisan Infrastructure Act, and it laid out a five-year plan for funding, and we're in year three or four, three, I think, right now. Them shells rate, there's no guarantee, the further we go along, that that money is still going to be there. It may get clawed back. So I think if we're going to apply for the funding, the sooner the better.
Yes, and while it's, while it's still there to at least, in an effort to help assist. And so, and sometimes people refer to it as the IIJA plan, right? So again, it was a federal pocket of money that was made available for these higher infrastructure, specifically around.
And you said you had to have a plan adopted by June? Or what did you do?
The deadline to apply for that additional funding is June 30. So I would need it, I would need it before that because you're not allowed to apply until you have an adopted safety.
Which is why it's on the agenda for May, for your next, for the regular session.
Great.
I think my comment remains the same, is that, you know, if there is limited funding, limited timeframe, et cetera, and you've identified problem areas, my hope is that we focus on pinpointed problem spots or areas or locations, rather than entire corridor, you know, improvement programs. I mean, for me, you know, improving the flow of traffic on a six-block area because you have issues at two intersections, I'd rather you focus on what do we need to do at those two intersections than an entire beautification project for six blocks, so that you can focus on pinpointed intersection-oriented issues, you know, and I guess get bigger bang for the buck.
I think I would agree with you. There are some of these countermeasures, look at things doing citywide. So, you know, speeding is a problem citywide, so there are things that you could try to do, you could do, you know, more lower speed limits citywide, or you could work with the police department to do more enforcement, or we could do more of those radar boards that show people how fast they're going. There are some citywide things like that that we can do, improving pavement markings, improving crosswalks. But I think, I guess the way I see this additional funding that would be coming through, we have some big-ticket items, infrastructure-wise, that we're going to need to address at some point, particularly traffic signals, some of which are reaching the end of their design life. So I can see us using that, the funding, to replace some of those signals. And the minimum amount of funding that you can apply for under this upcoming application is $2.5 million. You can apply for more if you want to. I think our issue is, because we have to match that request, we need to really be strategic about how much money we ask for. But a typical intersection where we're doing a traffic signal replacement is probably around $400,000. So we've got a lot of intersections. So it's, it sounds like a lot of money, but it's not going to go that far.
The other thing I'll say is, because you see, you know, notations of Edgewood and other things like that, all I would say is, I'd skip the places where we don't have confirmed partnering governmental participation, you know what I mean? Like where city-county road meets, like Eastern Boulevard, or state highway in Edgewood, things like that. If they're not at the table, ready to go, you know, and this says you should do something out there.
They are. It's in their CIP, and actually, I thought that they would have already had that out to bid and working on that because they've talked about it for several years, but yeah.
And I think, again, even though, even though this initial funding might be coming to an end, having this plan in place and this guideline is going to help us secure other types of funds that have been available through the state, state, federal, you know, federal dollars that pass through state agencies, and will give us that time to come back and prioritize. But again, timing is essential to finish this first step so that we can get our application in for the next, you know, jump sitting down there kind of smiling because one of the things that could have potentially been cut and reduced in our budget was matching funds. And so one of the things we do not, we didn't want to do was to make sure that we were cognizant that we needed to allow matching funds to continue, because once we start this application process, and you're, we're obligating and saying, yes, we're committed, and yes, that means the city is obligating the matching funds. So we just want to make sure that we're starting this to get a point and that we're being as transparent as possible. But even if the next step in the other grant wasn't there for June, I still think it's a great idea to finally have an overall study and a plan and a guideline in place, right? Starting point, it's a map.
Yeah, that was ARPA funds that we used up to get that.
Anything else for Jim?
Thanks for working on this.
Sure.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Okay. I've been up here thinking about this, and I would like to accommodate Councilman Alshire and make sure he has a say-so in this, and I'd like to end the work session now and call a vote to go into a special session, and then we can go back into work session afterwards. So can I get, I'd call a vote to go into special session?
So move.
You got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I just want to, I want to real quick mention, with the, with the ordinance that we'll put in the packet for next, for next week, when we do the adoption, we will include a worksheet, and we had copies to pass out for later, but we, we'll still make sure you get a copy that will show the $375,000 reduction we did in the budget, but will show the line items, the real estate revenue property tax, we're reducing transfers to the Economic Redevelopment Fund and the reduction in the Economic Development Fund in Vest Hagerstown, so that it's as clear as possible and as transparent as possible. Sorry about that here.
That's all right. All right, first up, we have the motion to introduction of inordinates, tax rates beginning July 1, 2025.
Mr. Mayor, move for the introduction of an ordinance on May 20, 2025, to establish the city's tax rates for the fiscal year July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026, on the basis of 1.057 per $100 of assessed value of all real property and 2.643 per $100 of assessed value of all business, personal property within the city of Hagerstown.
Do we have a second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, 4-1 passes. Next up, introduction of an ordinance, budget FY2025, 26.
Mr. Mayor, move for the introduction of an ordinance on May 20, 2025, to adopt the city's budget for fiscal year July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026, in the total amount of $222,997,300.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 1. 4-1 passes. Now I need to ask for a motion to leave special session. You got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, council, because I wanted to make sure that everybody's voice was heard on that, so I appreciate it.
Thank you, man.
Okay, back into work session. Next, next up is the amendment request, or request for proposal for upper floor housing grant program, Amanda Gregg.
I'm going to sit in for Margie Jo. She's down in Baltimore for the Choice Neighborhoods program, so.
Okay.
Nice.
So just to give a little bit of a background on the program, is the upper floor house, upper floor market rate housing program was designed to provide matching funds for developers to rehabilitate and create housing units for multi-story buildings with first-floor commercial. The intent is to increase the housing stock and encourage foot traffic in the surrounding areas. So the city of Hagerstown has the remaining $100,000 in community, Maryland Community Legacy Grant Funds to be applied to expenses to rehabilitate these buildings. The city may award them to single or multiple projects depending on the grants as they come in, but at minimum, it has to be a one-to-one match for those, the funds to be dispersed. Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development has communicated an extension for this grant through June 30, 2026. So what we're looking for is an amendment to the program guidelines. So staff are proposing for an additional allowance of architectural and engineering fees to be a potential submitted project in the project scope, and this would allow for potentially larger projects to submit for grant funding to help spur development growth. So if mayor and council move for approval of this amendment, we'd look for that at the regular session next week, and after which, the RFP that's already out there and open will be amended, reposted, and advertised to developers at that point.
Okay. That's a huge expense, so I think it should be advertised.
Yeah, we think it's a good move for developers and help on the front end, cause potential for inclusion.
Captain Bell, you good?
Yep.
Captain Clary, good? Okay. Well, I'm going to stay here. Amendment for request for, request proposal for Strategic Properties Grant Program.
And again, this is the same pot of funds, it's community legacy funding through Department of Housing and Community Development with the states. of Housing and Community Development with the states. The difference in this one is it's for strategic property grants. So this is for adaptive reuse of large vacant structures as a meaning of accelerating and lifting the property values for those areas. This pot of funding is actually 200,000 as opposed to 100,000 for the upper floor housing. Same thing as we're looking for. The red line version is also included here. It's, it's looking for the additional scope for architectural engineering fees to be included.
Everyone else?
Yeah.
Good?
Good.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Amanda Gregg and Jill Thompson. Lease for the University System of Maryland at Hagerstown for 60 West Washington Street.
Good afternoon. I have an additional handout, which are some slight modifications to the lease agreement that was in your packet and I'll walk you through that as well. So we're here to present a proposed lease with the University System of Maryland for the building at 60 West Washington. They currently occupy as an anchor tenant, the rear portion of this building and the lease is for the full building excluding the basement. So the lease also provides access for the city to the restrooms and to a green room during city permitted events at University Plaza as one of the paragraphs in the lease agreement. There's more detail there. We did work with Eric Deike considering the park's use of University Plaza and with Brittany Erasmandy to ensure that the lease was acceptable to, to them as well. The lease replaces an existing lease that they have for the rear portion of the building that would have expired on June 30th of 2027. And you can see in your memo, the five-year term and the lease rates for that five-year term. The total value of the lease is over three quarters of a million dollars for the five-year term, and we think this is very positive for the property management fund. Section 26 of the lease also allows USMH to present a proposal to purchase the property at any time during the term of the lease. This section allows the city to list the property for sale, just like we do any other property through the competitive negotiated sale process and gives tremendous flexibility in that the city is free to select or reject any and all proposals consistent with our competitive negotiated sale process, whether those proposals come from USMH or any other third parties. The changes since we put the packet together are, are minor. There's some required state language related to invoicing for rent. And so section 3.6 and 3.7 were added to the lease and you will see that reflected in the approval packet next Tuesday if you're ready to approve this. And then also in section 17 for termination, we had it based on hardship and they have requested the paragraph B unconvenience after we have completed two years of the five years of the lease. And staff recommend that we approve these changes. They would like to begin the lease with a program of USMH, which is a, an, a program of Frostburg State University called the Hub Program. And it, it offers workforce development and skill building for parents and it has a childcare component. And we think that this is very positive to have this type of use for the full building. I tag teamed with Amanda on, on this project and we're happy to answer any questions or if there was anything you think I missed.
Nope.
No questions for you? Jill, Amanda?
If they were to go into an agreement, soon will they be in the building?
They desire to, to take occupancy June 1st and.
It's a fall program that would begin in the fall, but they want to gear up to be ready and, and operational for the fall. They're very excited.
Anything else?
No, I'm glad you have asked for it with that property. It's been on the agenda for a couple of years, so thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next up is our legislative priorities for Maryland Municipal League. That's you.
Okay, so, um, thank you for this opportunity to sit here and, and receive some feedback. I will say that, you know, as Scott Nice Warner was very and is very proactive in MML, but also specifically in the MML Legislative Committee and Branch. And so I think that while we always have and put a list of items together to send to MML, that this year it feels like it happened way earlier in the process, earlier in the year. So with that said, next week we have to send the city's information. We can send no more than three items. And again, this is the initial for, to MML, Maryland Municipal League, right? What we hope that MML can help us propel and push forward. So truthfully, one of the only things that we have that I want to bring before you as a suggestion is that we would like to bring back express approval, right, for annexations. And we attempted that last year. We didn't necessarily start with MML. We started directly as Delegate Schindler and Senator Quarterman were here just, uh, just a week ago. And they mentioned, you know, that legislation, while it was discussed, it didn't go as far as what we had hoped in the initial year. But again, we're hopeful that if we take it back through MML, there are a lot of municipalities in the same situation across the state of Maryland. And so basically this is looking for, um, a repeal back to where things worked to, prior to the 2006 change, to allow the city to do some express approvals. So is everybody at this body okay if we put that forth as a suggest, as one of the three suggestions? And then separately from there, are there anything or any suggestions and recommendation that this body would have for MML specific? Keep it in mind, we should have an opportunity to later submit additional ideas. We would have to go through additional steps in order to do that with MML. But we also wanted to invite both our delegate and our senator back. And I think they mentioned last time, like if we, the earlier the better. So like October, November, that gives us a few months for you to develop some more priorities around your strategic plans and your goals because you, you took the seat and, and the end of November, one of the first things you did was very quickly put out your four-year calendar of your goals. And, and so really to take a step back and have an opportunity because then we immediately went into the budget. So to take a step back and be able to like look at that guiding frame that we have and maybe prioritize or more focused or provide more specifics and how do we roadmap that and what it looks like? And the legislative actions could actually help adjust that, I think.
Yeah, we don't have to come up with all the suggestions. We have a little bit of time, but something to work with.
And just again, MML, we have to have information sent back to them and a form's completed by next week, which again, I feel like is early in the process. Next week.
On day of.
It's the 30th, isn't it?
Yes, the next Friday. But there's a form, there's some other information we would have to have time to compile and put with that.
I think the expressing the approval process for annexation would be like priority, like number one.
Yeah. Agreed.
If we could get anything, it would be that.
I know we had, last time we had, uh, suggested and put forth the body worn cameras for expanding where we may instead of shall, right, to, to rule that out to more than just sworn police officers. I know as the, both our delegate and our senator sat here last week, one of them mentioned, you know, the Senate bill that went into place and if there was language that we wish to maybe suggest or recommend be adjusted in the, the Senate bill that exempted Meredith's Park. I'm just not sure, keep it in mind with MML, this is the broader for all municipalities, right? So, um, again, any feedback, any and all feedback.
Anyone got anything for Michelle?
We need the cameras. We didn't get them on the, I think, yeah, Delegate Schindler.
Say that one more time, I'm sorry.
You talking about the body cameras for everybody?
Yes, I mean, we could always.
For code, one for code enforcement? One for code enforcement? Yeah, okay.
I don't know that this is an area that they can focus on, but are they able to help us stress the urgency for the need of affordable housing? Or am I like going completely too far?
I don't know that you are. I mean.
I think that's a good, a good one because we, we have brought that up. And that you'll see when you go to MML, how affordable housing is one of the topics at the workshops and how we can hear from other municipalities on what they're going to address that. Since the tiny home discussion kind of came from, from networking in the MML space, so affordable housing and, and homeless.
Yeah, homelessness.
Is, is big on how we can better serve those in, in that situation.
Timing wise, I wish that we were putting in the MML legislative actions after the MML conference, right? To give everybody the opportunity to network and, and do that. So we would just have to have a structure or a, a guide work of exactly what we were thinking when we said how they could help with these issues because that's part of the information we have to provide next week in the.
I see.
But they are excellent. And again, definitely things that I think we should be looking at and talking about, hoping, see what that looks like and if we can get extra assistance.
I agree, especially in, again, in state of Maryland. Speaking of affordable housing, I mentioned this before, Maryland doesn't have a rental control law. So it would be good to hear what we can do. I know, I can't think of the bill, the good cause bill that was introduced last administration. I don't know where it landed. I looked it up this morning, I couldn't, couldn't find it.
I don't think it went very far.
Sure. But, you know, state level is having conversations now about what we can do for tenants and, and landlord rates, et cetera. But basically for, for our goal, we do have to evaluate the pros and cons of rent stability, so we were exploring what MML can do for our goal for that.
Right, so right now rates are basically controlled by the market, right? What the market will bear, what people are willing to pay and able to pay.
But that's statewide.
Yes, that is not unique just to this, that is not unique to the city of Hagerstown, right? That is, that is statewide and it's, it's not unique to just the state of Maryland. There are other states, right? That have similar stances. So again, it's an item that needs to be carefully weighed, pros and cons.
Also was thinking, um, I forgot what we called it before. When a tenant gets evicted and that kind of eviction stays with them, if, if there's any way that can be adjusted to where it's not ongoing, because I think that could even help with homelessness. You know, a lot of them have been evicted, so they can't rent another place. And if we can have anything on small business and how the state can be more helpful with that as well.
In what regards to small business?
Um, just about the, like different resources that could be available for the small business Even as far as storefronts and the landlords can be more lenient with them with, you know, especially if you're bringing more, more economic into the city. I guess this goes off a lot what I say before, like how do we help them stay in business? Not just fill the storefronts and they're just there, but how do we help them learn how to build their business and stay in business for the long run?
So again, really good ideas. I'm not sure how to frame that until legislative action ask by next week.
So this is what I'm hearing. I'm hearing that we're trying to approach them with the idea of we're trying to grow the city, so we need that express annexation. Then I'm hearing that we need help with affordable housing and we're also trying to help the ones that are paying for housing, but we're trying to make sure that they're not on the verge of being evicted. Then I'm hearing that we have people who have barriers that are not allowing them to get into homes or get into housing. Then I'm hearing we have businesses that are here for two years and then they're out. So their retention rate is really small. So that's everything that I'm hearing to compose the MML. Sorry, Michelle, that's just the way I'm being.
Are we more than three?
Yes.
We're limited to three, yes.
Oh, we're limited?
Well, I do want us to also, well, not just for MML, but something to consider when we do meet with our delegation about the enforcement or looking at how we can enforce legislative wise with the treatment sober homes. We had a long discussion, many discussions last administration and we also incorporate into our goals because we do have a lot of treatment homes popping up in the area and there is very vague guidelines on how they're operating and there is a safety concern, especially of those who are, you know, living there and then what kind of treatment are they getting? Are they really being supported when they're there and when they leave? So.
So there's no concrete by the book. If you open a home, a treatment home, this is how it should be ran? Like there's no, that's what you're saying, right? There's no like concrete.
Yeah.
It's kind of like I can run my house this way, I can run my department.
Okay. Yeah. And it's more on the support side of, of making sure that those who are living there are, are safe and getting the, the needs they need without, you know, a greed behind them, actually having a home, but actually helping them. So there was some, many discussions about that last, last time, which is why we, this body approved to put it back, put actually in a goal to look at the legislation side of things, what can we do for those people?
And then I guess, how many we up to, Michelle?
A lot.
Well.
But here, here's the thing, this is good because we need, we need, we have, you have a little, we have time left and it's good to brainstorm, right? These are all good suggestions that we can document. These are all suggestions to build upon and it, so that we can build exactly what that framework looks like. So by the time we're meeting with the legis, our legislators again, you know, in October and November, we're starting it. Just not, some of these, so express approval was a, was a definite.
Yes.
And before we adjourn, all that I ask is that we definitely get to either one, two, three, and I may ask for assistance on exactly what you want worded in the legislative action for next week. And if it's, we just don't have time, we're going to, I don't think anything comes off our list that we're creating right now. And I don't want to stop us because usually when you're in this moment and you're starting to think.
That's when the good stuff.
That's when.
I'm thinking, what if you try to root like the portable housing, that tenant barriers and the homelessness, if there's a way you can word it where it's grouped together? So like that's, you know what I mean? Because it's kind of like, oh.
I would say probably not.
So what we're asking is either for legislation to be created so that the city and municipalities would have authority and power to like execute something, be able to implement a way in which to help guide this, or we're asking the state to do it so that the state of Maryland can help, right? So I'm, I'm thinking we'll probably have to somehow, but doesn't, doesn't mean we can't keep listing them and.
Right. So is the limit three for the whole session or just three for this particular?
Three, three for this. And it's to help them because. And it's to help them, because every municipality will be submitting three, right, up to three, so that as a group, they have a great place to start, is they are sitting down and looking at what their legislative priorities are going to be, that the group will focus on high level in an effort to get across the line, because they're not going to be able to do everything that every group wants and they rarely want to be effective.
I would like to jump on Councilmember Burnett's suggestion, there has to be stricter guidelines for, for.
Treatment homes.
For treatment homes, absolutely. And she's right, it's vague.
Whatever wording we can get to get the legislation passed for the body cam, cameras, that would be great, so legislative council, work with both our state elements to, to get that for us, so.
Uh, the body worn cameras, so I believe actually went a little bit further along in the discussions and the process through this last legislative section, session, excuse me, so it could be that maybe we need to just tweak it and ask it to be taken back to MML. Again, knowing that it's a, a safety concern and, and all of the things, and they may say, well, it's too costly for some of these other municipalities, or they may say, you know, yes, and then finding ways to make that work.
Yeah, we'll just look into it and see what.
Right, yes. I don't, I don't.
But also, it will also help the he said, she said to code enforcement, because I have, I hear a lot of complaints, and then you talk to code enforcement and it's completely different, so I think that would help a lot.
And with the body worn camera, I think the big, one of the big things was, we wanted to make sure that the last time, that the wording was may and not shall, meaning if it was, if we put the words may in, if a municipality or other town, they could absolutely implement that, but they weren't required or they, it was not a shall in the event that it was not affordable, because body worn cameras, the cameras themselves, right, might not be as where the most expensive, but when you have to actually have the storage of the data, it's extremely expensive, as you will see within our police department. Very large dollar.
Server has to host all the information and yeah.
I think for, for MML, we should not include the body worn cameras, but definitely included for our discussion for Delegate Schindler, since he was so integrated and he actually introduced the bill, right? If we can wait for him to give us more insight in what we, what he can bring back.
Yeah.
That session.
Because he knows more about it than we do, so.
Yeah.
Yes. And again, this, we're not saying that these ideas won't still go forward, right? We're just saying which avenue we wish to pursue is the priority focus. So we're still good with express approvals, is there other thoughts or ideas?
For me, it has to do with some of like the abandoned buildings, the lots, for example, like the old city school that shut down, I'm not sure who owns, if it's owned or not, the Suri, the Suri school? There's two, so the Suri school and the old city school up on the south end, no, the west end, like you're going towards Walmart.
The old city.
Mm-hmm.
The.
It's like behind the gas station. And it says, this, it says, City Heights.
That was the school that they, I think they closed and everybody, all the kids went to Western Heights.
So who owns that, who owns that building? So my thing is like, we have that building, we've got the YMCA, we've got the other school by the city park, we've got all these buildings, and I've kind of mentioned this to Doug before, is he still here? No, but Jill is.
Yes.
About some other states that have turned them into like conversions for again, whether it's turning it into, bringing it back to life as a school or turning it into a affordable, you know, building for, for people to live in.
He's saying there should be a timeframe on.
No, not a timeframe, but is there something that MML can push to help us? I'm not sure what those barriers are to get us to either get investors, contractors or us, or we involved to actually turn those abandoned, you know, buildings into something.
So some of them are definitely still privately owned, like, oh, Suri school, right?
I know the Suri school is privately, I know the YMCA is privately owned.
Place on the left and that's like.
West, West Washington Street is privately owned.
Oh, right.
All three of those buildings, the YMCA, the Suri School and West Washington Street, while they're challenging prospect, challenging properties, they have been prospected, so sometimes there's a gap to get someone who is looking to redevelop that building, to make their bottom line work to, in order to get the investment to come. And sometimes it's just a matter of resources, which I see might be more programmatic than legislative, but certainly a topic to explore.
Okay.
And Councilman Alshar has referred to, to that as a white elephant.
Yes.
The white elephant.
Which, which one, all three of them?
Well, all of them. His example was like the Sears, which is now.
The old Sears, that's long enough.
But he was thinking about, that's what he, he deemed those type properties as like white elephant type property.
So actually to address them, one of the things that the city was successful in doing was we applied through the state through DHCD to secure grant funding, and so product of some of the grant money were just the things that Doug Reeser came to the table and discussed, that we are looking to change, make changes within our program guidelines to put things back out as an RFP for those who would be interested, so if there was potential buyer for any of those properties and we had a, they had these extra incentives out there, we didn't close it, they were, they would be able to submit an application program so that the state did help funnel money to the city in the hopes that we were able to assist.
Okay.
Some of those, at one point we called it white elephant, we've called it a couple different names, but to help, right, bridge that gap at the end. I think some, the private ownerships are very motivated to sell, and I think sometimes a private owner isn't motivated as motivated to sell, and I'm not sure how to help a private owner be more motivated and so. But still like it, we're still going to put it on there, because there's always different sources and avenues, and even if it's not a legislative item, it's definitely one of those things that staff always considers, as we sit around a table, a group of us for a variety of departments will sit when we discuss ARC grant funding, when we discuss, you know, every year we apply through DHCD for both community legacy grants and through their strategic demolition fund grants, we do it as we sat and discussed with what we were going to put forth through our congressman and our senator, like what we were going to cross there for appropriations, so again, some of these, some of these things and goals that you have, one of the ways we're going to address it is trying to find, what can we do? Is it programmatic, as, as Jill said, is it legislative, and then trying to find a way to help and assist where we can. So these are still all good things to be bringing forth.
Yeah, maybe, you know, find some better ways to elaborate, especially with the, you know, the annexation and all that, so.
So it sounds like I'm definitely doing express approval, we're going to hold on to body worn cameras, we've got a listing starting with affordable housing, homelessness, the homelessness eviction, small businesses, other barriers, enforcement treatment, treatment homes, there's a variety of things that fall under the treatment homes, I've got little notes everywhere, and then we're going to keep in mind about the building, abandoned buildings and vacant. Did I miss anybody? Was there anything other than express approval I'm definitely putting forth on Friday? And again, knowing that we still have another opportunity with MML, just going to take some additional paperwork on, on staff at a later date.
Yeah, and again, when we go to the conferences, conferences by MML, it'll really open up your, your eyes and your imagination and you'll see so many different scenarios and elements of what other cities and towns are doing, that you'll, you'll come back to the table and be like, this is what I learned, this is what we could also incorporate here in the city, so it's really, really, really beneficial to attend those conferences and and again, network with other mayors and council people to see what's working for them, and you'll still realize that a lot of towns is very similar to Hagerstown, a lot of same issues, a lot of, a lot of negatives and positives, so it's going to be great for you guys to witness that.
Jane will be here before you.
Can't wait.
Can't wait.
So back, sorry, I'm sorry, so back to your question, so yes, annexation one, being the fact that we have a lot of, we have a big demographic of people that are in substance abuse facilities and homes, that should be number two to put on. And then for number three, I would say housing, the affordability piece. I think those are like the three strongest ones you have right now.
And, and if you can link that, the affordable housing with the rate controls.
Right, like the barrier, yeah, the barrier piece. If you can make it work, like a two for one.
I do have that under.
I, I agree with that priority list.
I do too, I'm good.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Flaherty, you go with that?
Yeah.
All right. And we're just going to redo the body cam.
Actually, we were going to, that was still high on the list, but we're waiting to actually do that individually with the, when the delegation comes back, I think.
Yeah.
We felt that that's where the expertise was and since we were semi-successful, we were more successful than previous years, that was a good place to start.
All right. All right. City Minister.
Yes. I would be remiss if I did not mention all the wonderful things happening this weekend. Cannot believe we're already to Memorial Day weekend, so first and foremost, happy Memorial Day weekend for everybody, I hope that it's a safe and very happy occasion for all. Friday, May 23rd, Thunder in the Square from five until nine, starting at six o'clock, there will be live music. Saturday, May 24th, from noon until five, will be the Third Annual Musical Festival and Chili Cookoff, and it supports the Barbara Ingram School for Arts, it's going to be at the University Plaza, so good times for all, lots of wonderful things, more than just chili, so please come out. Candlelight Concert, Federal City Brass Band will happen on Saturday, May 24th, seven o'clock, and they're going to perform on the steps of the historic Maryland Theater, good time for all, and it is a free concert. And then, last but not least, on Sunday is the Historic City Farmers Market, again, hosted at the Hub City Brewery in the parking lot from noon until four, and as I mentioned, safe and happy Memorial Day celebrations to all.
Councilwoman Bell.
Just wanted to say thank you to Councilwoman Anderson for bringing some awareness to us, especially with the Haitian community, that was, that was good, so thank you for that. Oh, if anybody wants to come out, the Field House is travel basketball this weekend, my girls will be there.
Councilwoman Burnett.
Last, last Friday already? Yeah, last Friday, I was invited to speak to the, the Treatment Court graduates, there was a lot of community members there, from gatekeepers to obviously the probation officers that works with the graduates. My, I have a, my aunt was dealing with substance use and she got the help she needed, she actually first started with recognizing that she had a problem, she was embarrassed for that, for experiencing that over some time, but thanks to the people that's been involved with the Treatment Court from Honorable Judge Wilson and the counselors, she was able to, to not only forgive herself and give herself grace for, for dealing with that, but also understood that it's a work in progress, and her family, my family and I stand behind her every step of the way, and I hope and pray that any person that's dealing with issues with, with drugs or mental issues has a supportive family to help them, guide them through the way, because it is very challenging for not only the person dealing with it, but their family, and I'm just blessed to have her in my life, so, thank you.
Councilwoman Flaherty.
Yeah, I did Porsche Fest, that was really well put together and, you know, I was disappointed last year because it rained, so I didn't get to go do it, so it was neat to have a little bunch of bands on Prospect Street and all that, so that was a lot of neat, but um, that's all I have.
Councilwoman Anderson.
So we had a proclamation today for national cancer awareness and one individual was not able to make it, so I did write a little thing for her, her name is Julie, and I wanted to remind her of, I wanted to remind her something, so Julie, as we honor you today, we reflect on the importance of the national cancer awareness, it is a time to shine light on realities of this disease, to support ongoing research and to uplift voices and survivors, fighters that we've lost. Your story is a reminder of why this awareness matters, because every statistic is a face, a family and a future worth fighting for. Your journey has been nothing but short of inspiring, while bravely facing your battle of cancer, you've continued to do so many things, like raising your beautiful family, giving your dedicated time at St. Mary's Catholic School, you've been showing up with kindness even on your hardest days, I just wanted to remind you that your strength doesn't always have to be loud, but sometimes those quiet moments are worth pushing forward, so we celebrate you today and encourage your compassion and unwavering faith, so thank you for being a light in our community, an example for us all, and I did have one more for Ms. Beans. Ms. Beans, I just wanted to thank you for being a pillar in our community. I mean, you've made your mission to like help support the youth, whether it was through the city high schools or the middle schools, you made sure that you got a lot of kids cared, I mean fed, cared, and you supported them, you also remind us what it means to serve with love and to lead with purpose, you are a blessing to this community and we honor you with all the gratitude that you deserve, thank you, and we will continue to uplift lupus warriors like you today. And then lastly, I want to thank everyone for celebrating Haitian Heritage Month, I see that it was never done in Hagerstown before, so I truly like, I really do appreciate that, and for me, it does hit home being that my mother was born in Haiti, it is, they, they truly are resilient people, she was diagnosed with scleroderma, which is an autoimmune disease, she had the really progressive kind, meaning that your life expectancy is about three to five years, being the Haitian woman that she is, she left, she lived with 10 years with that disease, she was also recognized in the, the paper for Wash, West Palm Beach in South Florida, as being like one of the longest survivors with that, so yes, resilience is in their blood, and that's all I have for tonight.
First, I'm glad that Youth Council is here to represent. Second, I'm, I want to thank the council for indulging me on Thursday to have the special meeting, I, I really appreciate it, we, I know we sat for an hour and a half and it went three hours long, but we got educated on the budget and everybody had great discussion on that, and thanks, Michelle, for educating us on the budget, and it was very eye-opening. And again, today, thank you to the council for letting me, indulging me and, and changing the order, the way we did this, so make sure everybody was heard. With that, do I get a motion to adjourn? Any second?
Second.
Any discussion about anything this evening?
Food is on me.
All right, we adjourn. I'm not allowed, I'm not allowed to hit it anymore. Bob Bruchy yelled at me.
No, it's serious when you.